Calling Benton City Council Meeting to order, July twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five. Can we begin with a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Wattsworth here, Councilman Sandretto.
Here.
Councilman Reed.
Here.
Councilwoman Alcazar. Councilman Stevenson.
Here.
Thank you. Diana Tex, she has a very severe throat throat. I won't be able to make it tonight.
Motion to excuse.
Second.
All in favor?
Sandretto, I.
Wattsworth, I.
Stevens, I.
Uh, we can with the pledge of allegiance, um. Nathan, can you lead us?
Yes. And pleasantly. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the consent agenda.
A lot. I assume the size of the. Dollars expenditure is related to some of the special projects.
Yeah, four hundred and forty thousand for central Washington asphalt for the chip seal project. Is the bulk of it.
Okay.
Which we submitted the reimbursement paperwork today for that.
Okay. Um, other than that, motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Sandretto, I.
Wattsworth, I.
Reed, I.
Stevenson, I.
Consent agenda is approved. Any questions on the agenda? Um, but I, I'm great. We're going to need to add an executive session. And I believe the correct quote, quote for it is RCW forty two. Point three zero point one one zero one G. Is that correct? Scott?
Uh, Mayor, I believe, uh, the one that we were talking about was, um, RCW forty two dot three zero dot one one. Uh, one I, which is to discuss.
Okay.
Yeah, litigation or potential litigation.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other items on the consent or on the agenda that need addressed?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Sandretto, I.
Wattsworth, I.
Reed, I.
Stevenson, I.
Agenda is approved. Visitor comments. So any visitors that would like to make comments on a non-agenda item? There are no comments, so we'll continue on. Uh, staff reports, treasurer's reports in the packet, surcharge is in the packet. Um, did you want to add anything, Nathan, at the moment?
No, my answer is already on the agenda.
Okay. Council meeting or council committee member or city council members reports.
I have nothing since last meeting.
Uh, attended the Benton County mosquito control board meeting last night. It sounds like there is one case of West Nile that's in Yakima County. So they're watching very closely doing their trapping and everything else to make sure that they monitor. Any mosquitoes coming into our area and hopefully we can avoid getting too many West Nile cases.
Ooh.
Nothing to report.
Bill?
Nothing to report.
Okay. We'll continue on to public hearings. We have a, uh. The moratorium for discussion on accepting for applications of property located in the, um. City's current floodways. This is a second reading for a public hearing on that. Are there any public comments on that? Any? Any council discussion on that?
On the moratorium?
We, we passed it here a month or so ago. And there's just a second to have a public hearing on it.
Uh, my, mine's still gonna be the same thing, so.
Go ahead.
I don't have any new comments.
Okay. I don't know. This is something that we, did you want to make a comment on this? Scott, on the, um.
Uh, Mayor, I had a chance to talk to Eric Ferguson about this before our meeting today and he, he gave me a little more background on it. We, we don't believe we need to give the, uh, you know, read through the script on quasi judicial proceedings. So I think we're good to go on this one.
Okay. Okay. So what is our, um, course of action? Uh, we've had a public hearing on it, so it, it withstand them.
That's my understanding also. It's my understanding is this has already been voted on and, um, the next step was just to conduct the public hearing. And I, I think we're good to go on that, um, at this point, so.
Um, public hearing is closed on the, uh. On the moratorium. Uh, we have a, uh. Second reading on ordinance ten seventy five. This is a celery's ordinance that we.
Motion to approve on the second reading ordinance ten seventy five.
Yes.
On motion?
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Sandretto, I.
Wattsworth, I.
Stevens, I. Reed, I.
A motion passes.
Oh, is that in motion?
Uh. We have a discussion on our Sixth Street development that council had asked. City staff come back with options or ideas to discuss. Plans or devise plans to address issues on Sixth Street.
All right, uh, so yeah, following up on, uh, last council meeting, council requested a. More detailed review of Sixth Street and the challenges that we're facing there. Put together a brief presentation to kind of go over what we've got going on on Sixth Street and, and some, some options. You guys can all see the screen, I, I hope here.
Uh huh.
So, uh, current street conditions, the street is designed or approved for a forty foot right of way. Um, the current width of the actual asphalt is sixteen foot. Um, and condition of the road, it was recently chip sealed, but before that it was in pretty poor condition. A lot of alligatoring, um, lots of cracks, a lot of issues with the road. We had actually requested TIB to allow us to revitalize it. And, uh, repave, but they did not approve that saying based on their condition reporting chip seal was sufficient. So that just kind of gives you a background on, on the road condition as it stands. So show you a couple of things here. So went out and, uh, the property, let me jump back and jump up to this, this one. This property, let's see here. Right here. See me outlining it is set for, for, um. Future development. So this gentleman wants to put in. I, I guess it's not clearly defined yet, but he wants to put in some whole, some houses here, whether it's single family or duplexes where we have not received any formal. Notification. So he had his property surveyed, went out and toured it and looked at the survey. Markers and you can kind of see. Can't really zoom into this, this drawing, but you can kind of see here three little yellow dots, one there, there and there. Those are the survey markers which identify, um, edge of right away. You'll also see based on this green line that follows that survey marker that we've got. This front house here, the very first house, as you pull, as you pull in on the right hand side, very close, uh, to the right away. We've got a storage building and fencing that are, uh. Over the right away, so on city property. Uh, roughly four to six feet depending on, on the area. Uh, here, this yard has also got fencing and trees that are in the city right away. Uh, this property has fencing. Kind of goes the whole way down. Now we've got lots of trees over this area, so. On this side of the street. Um, we have some pretty drastic encroachment on the city's right away.
Mm hmm.
Um. This side, so the west side of the streets. Actually pretty well in line and no real major issues or concerns there. Um, other than the pavement doesn't go all the way to the right away. So, and this parcel here, this gentleman has also expressed interest in short plating his property. So if he did, we need to come up with a solution for the structures and. Well, specifically the structure encroaching on the right away. The other concern again is how close this house is. So that kind of gives you an idea of what we're looking at. Here's a picture of the survey markers I found and you can see like this one here. It's a good six feet in from the fence line. Same with this one. This one is in someone's, uh, front yard and you've got a tree. Uh, right smack dab in the middle of it, a large tree. And then on that top picture, you can also see this is further down the line and you've got a full grove, uh, line of trees. I didn't count how many, but quite a few very mature large trees that are. Uh, all encroaching right away. And those are these trees up on the northern, northern end of Sixth Street.
Mm hmm.
So that kind of gives you an idea where we're at. Uh, other things that are in the right away. So it's just kind of a picture. This is that large grove of trees on the northern side. This is that yard with a tree inside of it that there's, there's the fence. We've also got, uh, irrigation valves and, um. Um. Piping that's all within our right away that should be outside of that. And I think it's just accumulated over. Over years, um, where it wasn't clearly defined what we have and, and probably previous. Um, folks approved some of these, some of these developments. Um, we're wanting to require a curb veteran sidewalk on all new developments. And with that, I know we discussed the design of the street last, last meeting and, and how we would, how we would handle that, but, uh, even in requiring. Developers to install a curb veteran sidewalk. Uh, there's some challenges there just because of the structures and the fencing and how close then houses become to that right away area. Any questions, comments?
Oh, I got a source of questions.
All right.
Let's start off with a, a forty foot right away. Wha- what's that lend itself to streetwise? I mean.
Pretty standard for residential street. It was at one time sixty, and I know Mr. Engelhardt had mentioned that at, at the, I believe it was at the planning commission meeting. It was a one time sixty and, uh. Back in the early nineteen hundreds, I, I couldn't find the record of when it happened, but you could see on the deeds that, um. The city basically gave ten foot of, ten foot of land to each side. Um, to bring it into a forty foot right away. Cause at one time it was at sixty, but that was early nineteen hundreds, like nineteen twelve, nineteen seventeen around in there. But if you look at the property deeds now, it will, you know, it says on the legal descriptions that additional ten foot of land was, was given to the residents. In that area, but it doesn't say when that happened. I could dig deeper to find those dates exactly, but forty foot is, is not a real wide street. Um, especially once you add all that infrastructure and if you have street side parking. Um.
Well, can you have?
Preference.
Can you have street side parking with a forty foot?
Um.
You're looking at a ten foot eat up on sidewalks. Leads you thirty feet to the center.
Mm hmm.
And even if you, you sunk your lanes down to ten feet each. I mean, that, that barely gives you enough to have decent safe parking on one side.
Decent and safe, I guess, is the question. So there's a lot of streets that are forty foot where we allow two sides, you know, street parking.
Yeah, I've driven them and they suck.
Exactly. And that's where we'd be, um. You know, in a street like this. So legally, yeah, we, we can allow it, but it's, it's not a. It wouldn't be a preference of the city. To allow both sides on street parking just because it encroaches on the lanes, especially, um. If we're looking to increase traffic in the area with developments going in. So, um. I listed a few options that we have. One would be just full right away compliance. That'd be notifying all the folks in the area that, uh. Um, the right away is forty feet and any structures, appurtenances, fencing, anything needs to comply with that. And that will be along the whole, the whole side of the street.
Including that house? Or shop or whatever that is?
Including that shop.
So how was that one built on, I mean, that far over? I mean.
I can't answer that.
Do you know when it was built?
Um, no, I didn't. It was, uh, Deckard's property, Mr. Deckard, and I, I didn't ask him when it was built, but, uh, maybe. Folks, folks here might have some better ideas on that. We don't have any record, permit record or anything.
About being built.
What's your best guess, Vic?
The, 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 what you're talking about, the shed, this is like two foot over.
Yeah.
Uh. It was built later, probably in seventies, eighties, somewhere along in there. Um, when the owners that were in there before it was actually halls, then bentos and then Bento sold out. To, uh, I think Deckard's one bought it after that. But, um, what's occurred is just like everything else around here. People do what they want. They throw stuff on it and get away with it. And then all of a sudden now. You know, you come back with the issue of. You re-zoned it because it was low density. And that was part of your, um, urban development plan. When out in the urban development plan, you've got all these issues that. No, nobody said no to it in the game. Uh. They, that one whole stretch of trees have, have been there since those houses were put in.
In the nineties, yeah.
In the nineties, which was like clinical homes.
They were habitat for humanities, yeah.
Well, that was then was called La Clinica. And, uh. And then they just planted trees on the outside in, in the fence line. And all the pegs were there. They knew where the fence lines were, but it's now, well, we'll just do it anyway. They own everybody tries to stay on the east side. We gotta get this right, my boy. So you're getting backwards. We're on the west side of the street. Everything's pretty much much in line. Except where people are encroaching on and parking on the actual street. Down at the corner is rural. Uh, that goes to the main street.
Mm hmm.
The. And I. That's would be on the. West side, furthest down. Everything upcoming this way is mine. Adele's area where she lives, they even moved their fence in so she would have a spot to park. You know, uh, their opposite side street. In fact, it's one of some of your pictures, you can see. They, uh, where people are parking. I mean, uh, it was on the one where I don't know if you, you don't have it up there, but this one, this is the top one. If you look at the one, the top one way up there, it has the outhouse. And then because that's where they're, for being built, but. Right across the street, you can see people are parking. You see the white cars parking. And, and that's.
No.
That's even more than because there's still another five or six feet further. To the right of that white vehicle. That's part of this would be the right away. And so everybody stays keep moving that way and pretty soon you can't get in there. And the gentleman who's developing that place. Um, you know, he brought it to, to, uh, the planning commission that was gonna be maybe four, maybe five, maybe six. We, I am not right sure. But single bound dwellings. And now all of a sudden. P U D shows up here the other day. And the guy tells me that, yeah, we're, they're looking at getting the power over there so he can be putting duplexes in. Okay? And now he had a street that's so narrow, out of whack. Not in good condition and he's gonna want to put duplexes in there. That's an average. Of six duplexes, that's two. That's twelve total residences, times at least maybe one to two cars. And that's twenty four more vehicles coming off. One little pavement where that big tree is in front of that white. Uh, car.
Yeah, I, I don't know that they can put twelve in there though. That's too much, I think, for the size of the lot.
No applications been submitted for that project yet.
Well. The lots he has. And it's really interesting that there's a property map that he presented. And even shows his chain link fence on city street.
Hmm.
When he happened to be surveyed, I think, and I gave this to the planning commission.
Yeah, and we, we did receive a copy of that from, from you as well, but that's, there's no formal submission of that document with the city. And if he were to have his fence on the right away. That's not been formally submitted, so.
Okay, so it's a, it's a double edged sword there because the P U D is assuming, I think, it has and they're going by this. And they're showing where they're gonna put it. In fact, at one point. Uh, they said, well, we even thought about putting a, uh, uh, the, uh. Transformer, big transformer over on your property. And I said, not a chance, not on my right away. Um, because. That ten foot vaca- it was vacated in nineteen nineteen. March. Third of nineteen nineteen, it's in volume three, page four sixty two. Then it shows that it was vacated by ordinance.
Um, pence foot strip east side of Poplar, which that was what that street used to be called.
Um, and. And read, you know, the, the writings weren't so wonderful. I have to read from the original. Oh, and there was, there was another street. In there.
Could you, could you do me a favor? Can you come up and use this one mic so we can get all this recorded?
Oh, yeah, sure.
That would be very helpful.
I thought I was so loud. You wouldn't have to, but. Anyway.
We like, it, it protects us and you and everybody else.
Okay, well, I'll just.
Just lift the mic up and I think I did hear a copy of that.
No, not that.
I think I made that one.
That's it, I have. Um, and that shows the. Am I on?
You're on.
Um, and that, the map I showed, it tells you where the ten foot. Is and. At the bottom, you'll see it says Poplar. That was the old name where his current street is now. And then, um. What they were talking about Viagra, Niagara was vacated. There was another street. That went across all that property that they vacated at the same time. But. Um, so that's where it reduced the street down to forty feet because they re, they vacated it before. And then further up where it is now, I guess, Bell. Was called Poplar. And that's where it all started. But as I say, as you go down, you go down the street. Uh, everybody's just. Leaving it as it was. The two things, one, that woodshed that's over is all wood built. It is not on a foundation. Um, as far as you can see, they're just wood stringers, which is easy enough if they needed to, to pick it up and move it back, which is, he had plenty of room to do that. The other one, the little house, I don't believe is on a foundation either, which could be picked up. But if you look further down on the corner. Um. Dan Deckert. He had it surveyed because he was looking at short plating everything. There is a pin. There is a pin. That is. Inside his fence as well as the, um. Utility service pole for that little house is on the street.
Mm hmm.
And I don't know how they, how they did that, but.
They did that because the right away, unless it's developed. Nobody really knows and nobody cares, pays attention to per se, right? So when PED comes out, they go, okay, that's undeveloped. We're just gonna put the pole here.
Yeah, well, they put, they put a pole by my place. It's on my property. Not on the right away because it's a forty foot right away, right?
Mm hmm.
And. They don't want to do money, anything about it. To move it. To on the right away. So I mean. I have to dodge around it when I back out, but anyway.
Well, you can fight that by going to them and.
Well, I, I, that's not a big enough issue.
I understand.
You know, I, if I wanted to try to, I asked him twenty years ago when we, when it was first being. They were removing the old pole, putting a new one in. Oh, we can't do that. Well, I put it right where, where it's at and can't move it and all the wires and everything else, blah, 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 blah. And they said, if you want to pay for it, you, we could, might consider it.
Yeah, I turned around and asked about an easement.
Anyway. Um, and, and our concern and Adella and everybody else, I also had, I presented at the, at the. Planning commission, a letter from the gentleman who's out of town because of, uh, uh, family, uh. Issues or problems that I, I don't know if someone's passed away and they're dealing with it, but he has the same concern. And that's what the letter stated, you know, he, he's been opposed to this development before. When it was, uh, in front of the planning commission. Um, and so it's not just. I'm the one having a problem. It's more than that. Adella. Uh, person down next to me, Renee, um. Merk also is opposed. To it. As far as the trees and that where you can see that string of trees that goes all the way down to the next corner. You don't see the bottom corner. They're, they're hanging over so bad, a school bus can't get through. I can't even drive my pickup with a canopy on it. Because of the trees or, and limbs.
Yeah.
Yeah, see that set right there and the evergreens are below it and they're doing the same thing. You can see how much distance there is for a school bus to go. Uh. In order to school bus to get by, they end up on the other side of the street. Now you throw, like I said, another twelve, fifteen, eighteen cars coming off that. And, and I was reading in some of the notes of somebody talking about making it a one way street. That's, that's even gonna be worse. And the other.
These items of discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Decision made.
No, right. No, I know. I was gonna say, I'm just saying a one way street would cause. Total disaster, um, because. At the far corner where all those trees are, the people coming out of those, uh. Houses, little clinical places and so forth. They're using this street as their. Way to try to get out because they don't want to go on the street, third street, come out on that corner across. From the dollar store because the traffic is horrible there.
Mm hmm.
So I mean, it, it, it just compounding one thing right after the other, um. And you can, I guess, I, if, if you look further down, the, the people on the corner, they're parking already on the street and you, 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 you can't. It, it's hard enough to try to get out, out as it is and to add that money more. It's just be, it's horrible. We're totally opposed to it. We were opposed to the whole thing going through. But. Um, I understand development and urban growth. But if we're gonna do urban growth, we need to do it under the ordinances. It's a forty foot street. We take care of it and everybody's gonna bite the bullet. And I, I also think the person coming in to develop it should be the one who fronts some of that bill. To make sure that everything's done right, not to come back and say, well. We don't want to have to move our fence. Um, this particular. I, if, I know you don't know the council seeing this one yet.
I haven't, no.
But. I just wanted to let Leach take a look at that. This is where the, this is where the current. See that fence is, there's the twenty foot fence. He's halfway in on that whole section. Then it comes back up over here. And it's like. You don't want to move the fence. Well.
He would have to comply with the right away.
I, I, I'm just hoping that you're gonna take this and make it, um. That they have to do it by the ordinance. And by the changes. And not just.
So what, what you're telling me right now is that you would like to see that street developed as a forty foot.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I understand. Um, the issues with the little house. I understand there's issues with it. With the, uh, the shed, but those are, uh. Not any kind of different than when the city, I know there was a main highway when they walked, came in and said, all right, folks, we gotta. We have to, uh. We have to cut off part of your lawns.
Mm hmm.
And, and they did it and then they built back and put the blocking and reinforced their land. That's, I guess that's what I'm asking. I wanted to keep it at forty feet, get this, get that fence outward, it, get it off where it belongs. And make this work. Uh, correctly. And, and even the forty foot, it's gonna take you, uh. Real close to the edge of everybody's properties.
Wow.
But, but I think some, one of the solutions I, I heard. But but I think some, one of the solutions, I I heard somebody brought up a second ago was. What about making at least? That forty foot and and if you have to narrow it down with the five foot and five foot sidewalks, that only leaves thirty. To make. That. Side where all the. Uh, Van Deckardt and all that up in there, make it a no parking site because that's where people are coming off of that. The main street turning there. And you can't turn there. Without being in almost in the other. Portion because. Of the utility pole there. And the his fence is way out. That fence. On that older home's probably been there since the fifty sixties.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so um I was mentioning the options that that we have. One is full right away compliance, which we've kinda discussed that quite a bit and. That'd be removing everything off of that east side. Um, having property owners do that and some of those structures have been there quite a while. Um, design is developed, so as developers come in and and do choose to develop, then we force them to meet those design requirements. We already know we've got the one property that's gonna be gonna be developed and then there's been express interest in the corner property there as well. Um, one option is local improvement district. But that would require all the property owners on that street to approve that and be willing to pay the money to design and develop the road. Um. I think the chances of that are probably pretty minimal. Um, getting them to sign off on that, but it is something we can research. And then offering variance or deferral requests. Which I'm not real. A real um advocate of that, but it is an option. And continue as is. I can say right now, I've done some research on grant funding because this is not an F F C classified street. We don't have options through. Um, wash dot B F cog. Um. Or there was another one that I looked into, T I B. Um, for doing full redesign and all that. T I B will maintain. But that's about maintain existing, but that's about it. So something we can continue to look into. I am going to an I A C C conference in October. And I thought maybe USDA might be an option as a a loan. Um, something to look at, so that's that's the only other option I I am aware of that may be available for funding.
Mm hmm.
Um, just because it's the local neighborhood street. Even then, though, it probably pretty remote.
And I just have one thing, I'll go to the mic. What's your the irritating part of of this of this? Is it was uh. Mayor here in Benton City was Webb Bateman. I was on council. Along with other the other four. And. When I was appointed by this mayor. To come on. I took over what was streets and you guys know what a ten year street plan is. And on the ten year street plan. Was that? Sixth street. Back then it was third. But anyway, sixth street. And I said, I did not want to keep that on. The number one priority for a ten year street plan because I would be accused of. Trying to fix my street. And the council voted. To put back then two thousand dollars to have somebody actually. Do this, get it all marked off. And had every that it done right. Um, had they done it back in the eighties, we wouldn't be sitting here forty years later. With this problem. And what he ended up doing is he got the contractors that were. Repaving the whole main street from the bridge. To the old uh railroad crossing was the first phase and the second phase from the railroad crossings. All the way to to the city limits, the second phase, millions of dollars of. Um. Construction. He got talked to the. The ones who. Won the bid and he said, well, what can you do for that street? And the guy said, well, we can, we can uh grade it and gravel it some and. You know, leave it at that. He said, go ahead. I tried to get him to stop. Doing it and Bateman was the mayor said, I've got coming in tomorrow and they're doing it. I said, well, you're gonna pay for it. And the three of us, there was three people who voted against it. And never paid for it and until. The next election that came up and sure enough. I was told. Well, you weren't elected again because you fixed your street. That's number one irritation. Number two is. Um. They didn't pay for it because we voted against until they changed the council and the very first meeting they had. They paid for it. Like I said, if the city would have done it correctly in the first place. We wouldn't be sitting here. All right, thank you.
Mm hmm. So. Have you looked at these buildings that are encroaching at all?
Um. I have not entered their property, but from the street I have looked at it. It's also fenced in, so I can't look at it real close. Um, but from from what I've seen, it does look like a wood structure. Not able to see a foundation there. I can't tell um if it's got a concrete floor or not. From the outside. And it's just one building. All the rest is just fencing and trees. Really, that's.
It looks like you got two encroachments, don't you?
No, the other one's just really close. Basically, when they open their door, they're gonna be right at sidewalk, steps down straight to sidewalk. So.
You're talking the first house.
The house, yes.
But. So I'm trying to see your picture here. It looks like you got a little shed. Right at the back of that property.
That's correct.
Over.
Yep.
And then on the next. Facility, you got another one there.
No, that's just trees and fencing. There's no building there.
There's no building there?
No. It's just the one building, Mr. Deckard's storage building.
There's only one little shed.
Was that a sidewalk or pavement or something there? Oh, must be the gate.
Yeah, thi- this here is that gravel driveway here and then um right here, you've got like a a large tree in their yard and you've got fencing there.
Down, down. Right below that red line.
Here?
Yeah.
No, it's just driveway. The building ends right about there. How good my mouse is, but that building ends right about there, so it's not encroaching.
So the next one's up against it though.
And this is the small house that's again, open your door and you'll be be right at sidewalk.
This is side door, the front door.
Yeah, but I think they use as their primary entrance and exit. Uh, based on their driveway and all that.
Well, and that's the other problem. They use this the street to park on. Because. There's. They haven't put uh. An area big enough. What they do have it, but they have stuff in it, the people won't pu- won't park in it. So. Somebody's gonna get hurt there. Sooner or later, because. Well, we have to. But. A- and and I don't know what the city ordinances are for the guys on the corner. But there's enough. Vehicles and. Living space in there and both the single family dwelling. And there's travel trailers there and four or five cars there and they park on. The street.
You're referring to to this property here, Vic?
Yes.
Yeah.
He's a mobile home installer.
Yeah, there's a mobile home there, but I'm also on that, there's a uh. And then the top it all off, they park on the outside. Uh, uh, on the the street. And you you can't see. From the park. In there. I mean. It's it's a huge. Yes.
You obviously don't wanna decision tonight on what to do or.
Um, we we nothing is um time sensitive right now. Once an application is formally submitted. By a Mr. Lavrentia for the one property he's going to develop. And then we'll need to make some sort of decision. How we wanna move forward and then maybe just at the time, having him design his portion. With our engineer then reviewing and approving that. Um. Cause I'm concerned about drainage. Um. You know, if if the street's not developed and we have him put in curb gutter sidewalk. And then we go in later to develop the street and have a correct crown and all of that and that curb gutter sidewalk may not be at the appropriate elevation. So that that's a concern and I know um. Uh, Adella here also has a has a house where she's gonna have to install her better sidewalk. Um, so. If she does that and then we go in later and design the street and our elevations are incorrect and those those areas will. Um. May maybe have to be replaced just depending on where they're sitting. Which we'd work, you know, Alan's aware of it, our engineer, um. And I think he would take as much into consideration as he can, but he's he has mentioned that that would be a a big challenge with. Having infrastructure put in without a full street design.
Just piecing it together, which sounds like it's just gonna create bigger mess at the end when all of it has to be done.
That's correct. That's correct. And and you know, you can look at that west side of the street and. Kind of project, you're gonna get quite a bit of development there. If things go as planned, you'll have. Um, the corner lot developed. You know, and the second one basically all the way up to about this point. And then this. This property here. Um, if someone were to purchase it. Um, could easily, you know, qualify for development as well. So we could easily have curb gutter sidewalk all the way up, you know, halfway up the street on this side. All done by developers. But I don't foresee. Really any more development on this other other side of the street.
The the west side, one of the issues there is. We have a number of power poles sitting in there.
We do.
We're not positive exactly where they sit.
Based on the survey markers and measuring across forty foot, most of them are sitting right on the right away line. Um, just just the one on Mr. Engelhart's property is over a little bit into his property, but the rest appear to be sitting right on that right away line.
Well, if we uh. Do develop or come up with funding for it. They would need to be sunk underground.
Mm hmm. That would be the preference, definitely.
Well, no, they would need to be. I wouldn't want them above ground anymore.
Mm hmm. I would agree with that.
So the question is then what it added its cost is that to us?
Well, to meet our our code requirements, we'd also have to have adequate street lighting along the whole street. So we'd have to, you know, incur the cost for street lighting. Storm drainage, um. Not so much on a a little bit of ADA landings, um probably just right there on Babs. Um. So there'd be some additional costs there as well.
I guess moving forward, would there be a way that you could put together a package of like with all of it until together to see what the cost would be? Roughly, I know you can't give me exact. And then my next question, is there a way that you can? With some design tool, be able to. Project what it would look like once it was finished, like the removal of the fences. With the street lights with the uh sidewalk, so we can see. I guess some of the the fences being moved, trees being cut down and what it would look like. I think sometimes. Design goes a lot further, like gives people an idea of what it. Would look like.
Some kind of, yeah, some kind of sketchup to vis- to to visualize.
Yeah. I've never done that before. But I'll see what I can do or there are a lot of programs out.
Programs out there that work really well on on kind of doing a design factor for this kind of stuff. And I just think. If we can show the residents of, you know, possibly this is what it could look like.
Sure.
It might go a little bit further than just going and saying, we're gonna rip out your fence and slam the sidewalk in.
Gotcha. Yeah, we can look into putting some some visuals together and I will continue to research funding options um and putting together a more. Uh, detailed cost estimate on if we were to. Develop the whole street, you know, with all code requirements, what that would look like.
Yeah.
We can put something like that together. Um, I would, my my recommendation for now is is, you know, there are no time constraints. Um, requiring. Us to. Um. Meet any, you know, meet any right away requirements other than, you know, you've got some stuff. They're close, but I think Mr. Lavrentia, if he's got a fence on there, we do have a current action request from a citizen. Requesting his fence be removed because uh folks across the street have difficulty parking, uh pulling in and out, especially with a trailer. Uh, but since that's being developed soon, we can, we can and I'll kind of confirm with Ginny, but I think we can. Move forward with a compliance request on that one. Is that correct, Jenny? For the fencing there on the Lavrentia po- property?
So we're gonna, so just.
Just request that he relocate his fence in compliance with the right away requirements because he is gonna be developing soon.
Because he's gonna be developing soon? Because then that would send me into then, why wouldn't we do that with Deckard as well?
And that would be justification, right? That would be the justification and the fact that uh we know he's developing soon and maybe we have to wait till his application's actually in. Yeah.
Okay, move your fence.
Does that also allow you to dress the trees?
Now, I was gonna ask about the other trees. Do we not have a city ordinance? Related to bushes and vegetation encroaching on.
Yes.
Some of it's pretty far into the road.
They do and they are. I I will agree with it.
And I've been there for many years. The bus always hits those trees, always.
So since when I started, um, I think your neighbor Sherry, is there anyone Sherry that that owns that property? Um, the city was always requiring her to trim back those trees, which is a financial burden for her as well. And um. Which she had been doing as far as she, I think the community actually came together and would help her remove those. But in our code. Um, you are welcome as a property owner to cut back off of your property as well. You know, and then I can comply then to cut off that vegetation. But my problem has been. Is I know that street is not at the right width. Those trees are in the right away, so they are our trees. Would they not be?
No. So undeveloped right away belongs to the resident adjacent. And it's their job to maintain all vegetations.
Up to the edge of the right away. I I will look into that.
The developed right away. So if there's pavement, no curb and gutter. The resident is responsible for the vegetation from that pavement out. If there's curb. They're responsible from the curb back to their property line. And and I went through this with my property, so. I I fought and fought about four feet. And who is responsible? And the city says if the weeds grow on it. I'm responsible.
Did they find that in the code for you and provide that to you? That's what I'm wondering. You know what I mean?
To sue the shit out of me.
I would hope they would have found that in the code. That's, you know, that's interesting because from what I've read, it's actually up to the right away, but it doesn't say. Undeveloped. Either in it, so I'll I'll research that and check it out and see exactly what that is. It could have changed. Stuff changes in the codes all the time. So.
So.
I I think that's a big ongoing battle because even twelve years ago when I built my house, I had that problem.
It's it's considered, no, it's considered vegetation. And it's considered the property owner's responsibility.
We will.
I have, I have four feet of right away down here.
Yeah.
The city tried to steal my my retaining wall. And wanted me to gift it to him. Because it's on their property. I said, well, wait a minute, I have to take care of the vegetation on this property. You're not getting that. They backed off of that because. They said, you're right. You are responsible to take care of everything from the developed portion back to your property line.
I think we have a lot of. Questions, so I I mean, I think we're just kind of beating a drum right now until we can get some.
That's that's how I ended up here. I I'm telling you, that's why I'm on this council is because of that argument.
But far right into that tree. Who do they come out?
Goes after the property owner.
It's not on their property.
Doesn't matter. According to ordinance, as they told me. That the property owner is responsible for all non-developed. Property. In the right away. Adjacent to their property line. Period.
Like I said, I thi- I think this is something that. Nathan can definitely dig into and get a better. Thing for us, I mean.
That'll be part of a more comprehensive uh report that I can provide in the future.
Perfect. Hey, I do have that piece of the code.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it's under twelve point zero five point zero. Four zero property owner liability for maintenance and repairs. So it's in, it is in our sidewalk section of the code. So it says whenever. Any public right of way within the city shall have been improved by the construction of a sidewalk. Along either side thereof, the duty and expense of the inspection, maintenance, cleaning, snow removal, repair. And removal uh or barriers along the outer margin of the said sidewalk where the same. Is elevated more than two feet above the budding ground shell. Is elevated more than two feet above the abiding ground shall be upon the owner of the directly abutting property. And improvements shall be made by the owner in manner provided.
That's regarding sidewalk.
They told me it's from the curb.
That's how, that's how you define it, though. You know what I mean? That's where I've gone down that rabbit hole of like. How how do you comply these people when you know, okay, I know that right away is bigger, just like what you're saying. And that's the only section of the code that I've found found so far, which the code is fast.
So Eric Ferguson told me straight to my face. That. If there's no curb. It's to the edge of pavement. If there's curb, it's from the back of curb to the the property line. And if there's a sidewalk, I'm responsible for the sidewalk repair. After they put it in. And I'm responsible for all the vegetation. Up into my property line.
Yeah, because the people who. The people pay for, the residents pay for the sidewalks. So that's why I'm guessing that they comply people to take care of those sidewalks, right? And now you're responsible for that.
You're you're responsible.
But I guess I'll hit it. I guess I'll hit up Eric about where that section of the code is and have him show me it, so I can do my job better as well.
Cause that that was the major fight I had.
Alright, well, provide more information as we go, so there's clearly more questions that need to be answered, but we'll put that together.
Wait for a return discussion.
Yes.
Okay. Well, then it's back.
Late October after the I A C C conference.
Perfect.
Okay. Okay, next item is a discussion. From Nathan on our negotiations and work with the railroad company.
Yeah, so uh kind of bringing you up to speed on the uh railroad bridge acquisition. Uh, finally received back from railroad an updated appraisal on the bridge. The appraisal done in twenty. Twenty twenty five, I think twenty twenty one. Was like seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The updated appraisals about one point one million, which that document is in in your packet. I've got a copy here if you'd like to see it as well. Um, but basically what they did is they've got an internal guy who does appraisals. He estimated the value of a completed um bridge at four point eight million, almost four point nine. And then from there, he reduced the cost to repair. Uh, depreciated based on the condition. Uh, totally adjusted out about three point eight and leaves an estimate back of one, a little under one point one million for the bridge. So I called him and asked what the process was from here. Is it, you know, wh- what is Union Pacific's policy on uh? Real estate acquisition, sales and all of that. Are are we tied to that appraisal amount? Do we, do we have flexibility? Um, his statement was that uh. If we can show that the bridge is not worth that much based on our own certified appraiser. Um, we can't just say we don't think it's worth that much. Um, but if we can document, show document and prove that it's not worth. What they appraise it as, uh, they're willing to look at that number.
So I I hear me out being the devil here, right? So you got a railroad bridge. In the middle of two separate properties. With no access that they can ever get to again. That is a public hazard currently. That is a nuisance for children to jump on, crawl around, run around. And we want to repurpose it to make it an attraction. And they're gonna try and tell me that it's worth one point one million dollars. Ask them how much it is for them to pull the son of a bitch out. And that's on the record. Ask them, say, what's it gonna cost you to remove it? Because if you don't sell it to us at a decent price. We want it gone. Cause it's a danger to our citizens currently. That is ass and not a million dollars.
It is.
That thing's worth the value of scrap steel.
That's my point. And now to get that scrap steel off there, you gotta use cranes. You gotta use construction guys. That's costly.
And they gotta have access.
Yeah, and they have none.
Honestly, this should be a thing against for reducing any potential EPA liability.
My point exactly, right? EPA, the liability of somebody getting hurt, all that stuff.
I think there's just more work to be done. I mean, I it's nothing to get too angry over right now. I think we're still at the beginning of the process and I think. We can have more conversations with them and and see if we can get them to come down to some senses on. You know.
I'm hoping so. Um, I asked about donations. I asked about public uh. You know, that we would be willing to recognize them publicly with signage and all of that plaques about the history of the bridge. And he said they are not in the business of donating bridges. I did bring up an option of showing our project budget to have a completed project, which we're funded two million for this job. And just saying if. If we can show a completed project. You know, our budget, our budget for, I didn't tell them what we're funded. I said, we have a budget for the project and if we can document, this is, this is a completed project, this much to redeck it. Which I've got a budget document there. This much to redeck it, you know, what we put in already and environmental surveys and all of that. Um, and falling within our budget, I think we're looking at looking at like six sixty nine. Um, would you be open to looking at that? He said they would. And that's kind of where I left the conversation. I've provided documentation. I've provided um. Um, pictures, letters, liability, you know, liability concerns, all of that. Um, seems to fall on deaf ears, but I will continue to work, negotiate with them. We might have a man who knows somebody from Union Pacific that can. Uh, get us an inside, you know, an inside deal, but right now. Um, you know, based on the conversations. I brought it all up. They have no access. They have no land on the other side. The bridge is in poor condition. It's a liability. They're not maintaining it. You know, that they're the ones that could be held liable if something were to happen. And it's not really getting anywhere, but I can continue to pursue that, continue to discuss it with them.
Could it be brought up as a hazard to navigation for the river?
Hmm, probably not. It's not navigable waterway. In the sense of.
Yeah, but the definition of that's real fundable.
I I don't know. I don't know if that's an option or not. I don't even know who I would talk to about that, but it's something we could, we could look into. You know, the other option is condemning the bridge, but that's outside of city limits, so it's out of our jurisdiction.
We have friends. Now, my point is. Yes, the railroad bridge.
Old railroad bridge.
All all properties. Inside the water. Or adjacent to the uh river. Ten fifteen feet, twenty feet. Something like that. They're all on it. They're all considered county property. People working at it, see if you can find somebody who's an expert at this. The the state got two of these railroad bridges at some point. Hopefully they didn't spend anywhere near that money on it.
I'll um look into that. I've got some contacts for the bridge in oh. I've got some, I've got some information. There's a bridge eastern, I think, Lake Eastern area.
Yeah.
And there was one and I've got some information on that, so I'll look into that.
There's also one done up in Grant County at Madawal.
Yes.
So both of those were put on that uh. Trail, whatever the trail's name is.
I don't know what you're talking about. I think that anybody either.
I think it's Palouse, Palouse to. Coat now, it's, yeah, I don't remember exactly the name, but something about the Palouse, but um alright, I'll keep researching it. That's everything I got.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
Found it, Danny. You were so right.
Was that right?
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Thank you.
So so it is under twelve point zero five point zero five zero hazardous conditions. I'm not reading the whole thing, but it does say. Um, maintain or permit to remain upon any part of said right of way located between the curb line. Or if there is no curb line, then the adjacent edge of the traveled portion of such right of way. And the abiding property line.
There's. No further council discussion. That's during this. Portion of the council meeting and. Going to an executive session. At five after the hour. Or hopefully no longer than five minutes and be finished at. At eight ten uh pursuant to R C W forty two thirty one ten one I. Council meeting is adjourned. Executive session will start at five after the hour. Calling back to order, Benton City Council Meeting. For July twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five. Are there any additional discussions or motions?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Benton City Council Meeting. July twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five. It's hereby adjourned. Thank you for coming.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.